Good evening, it's the Milford Planning Board of Tuesday, March 18th. First order of business is the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented?
Second.
The move is second to accept the minutes of the meeting. Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Fai, thank you. We have no 81Ps. There's nothing that has to jump out first, Larry? Okay.
We've got that suspicious character setting in the audience there, so.
Pretty familiar.
We keep showing up and meeting like this.
Keep an eye on him.
You're on. Thank you for having us again. Josh Fiala with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, NAPC, serving the town of Milford in the capacity of comprehensive plan consultant. So happy to be with the Planning Board again. Thank you for hosting a joint committee meeting with the Milford Comprehensive Plan Ad-Hoc Committee. So appreciate that. We have good update this evening and just will dive right in. So we have a bit of review to do with our progress, feverishly drafting the draft plan. Sadly, I don't return to you all a complete hero this evening because I haven't delivered all the chapters yet, but we are making good progress, I believe, and have a mountain of information which is in front of you and we can talk about some initial reactions, if you have some. Also talk about our approach to final engagement in this process to close it out, including the final comment period from the community and then any next steps when we talk about next meetings as well, which Larry and I started to go through, but we can get the opinion of the Planning Board and the Ad-Hoc Committee as well, just in terms of how you'd like to see those meetings confirmed for the remainder of this process. Thank you all for your efforts, as this is meeting number 11. It's been a lot of dedication and a lot of time and hours that you had taken out from other topics to serve this planning process and to guide our efforts. We really appreciate all of you doing so. We are amazingly almost turning the calendar towards spring with the equinox this week, so we are here towards that final chapter of this effort where we really are compiling the plan and that's what we've been sending along to Larry and to all of you is draft chapters and that work. We really just have the finalization of the remaining chapters, which we'll send along in short order and then bringing that out to the broader community and discussing it with them and the results of this process. And then trying to, I think through our final steps, set you all up as well as possible for implementation of the plan, because we'd like to see action from this planning effort and we'll set about on some tangible next steps that you can all take to keep the momentum. So let's talk about the draft plan and how we've ended up over the last month or so. So to date, and I just updated this sitting here now, it's a dynamic, like every day there's a new chapter which seems to be finalized, ready to be sent. So far, we've sent along seven chapters of 14, which is exactly halfway. That includes the introductory chapter, then the series of Milford's past, present, and future, which go through historical, present data, and then the future vision statement, which has been crafted through this process. And then, as we've discussed, the chapters from there incorporate the goals, strategies, and actions within a set of themes, which reinforce what we've heard from the community and tie back to the vision statement. So that's chapters five, six, and seven, with building community and bridging cultures, strengthening the downtown as a center of the community, and improving traffic safety and reducing congestion. So those seven, Larry has graciously printed for you. Those are in your packets this evening and you can look through those, send back either directly to me or through Larry, any thoughts or comments, and we'll be happy to continue incorporating and improving those up to as long as we can and that continues over the next few months to make those chapters as good as possible. The remainder of the chapters, we have chapter eight, which is ready to send, but I have not sent yet. I'm going to try to send the rest of the chapters in probably three-chapter clusters, so I'll try to finish nine and 10. They're drafted, but I'm still reviewing them and making sure that everything is in order before sending them along. So the next batch you'll get will be eight, nine, and 10, and I think that's well within reason to happen this week. And then probably overly ambitious to think that the next cohort, which would be 11, 12, and 13, will also happen this week, but I think will happen towards the beginning of next week in more realistic terms. And that would be the final of the thematic chapters, so you'd have in your hand 13 chapters at that point. The 14th chapter is the implementation chapter. That chapter probably will, we will still hold on and pull everything together, including the final engagement, which I'll go through, which will help inform the implementation chapter. So the implementation chapter will be the last and it will be really helping to set that momentum that I talked about to keep you all moving positively on this work. So that is what you have. I think in general, the thematic chapters are landing in the neighborhood of nine or 10 pages a chapter, which I think is about as tight as we can get them, anything more, and we start to lose some important information. But we've tried to, try not to go on and on and try to get to the point, but that's about as best we can do in terms of brevity. But if you see things you think are repetitive or we can cut, we're happy to take those suggestions, too. A little bit about the draft chapters themselves. They are, I sent them as PDFs. They're in Word documents right now, so if you prefer to do, like attract changes or comment that way, if that's better for you, I'm happy to send them as Word docs. All right, so I'll just, we'll continue on as PDFs.
PDFs.
PDFs are better. Continue in that vein. They are what I would call lightly formatted, like you can see the format and layout, there's some iconography occurring in them, but they are not the same as what I showed you in the previous meeting, which is the heavier-formatted document, which were, we'll be basically pulling this content into, but wanted to get you the content for review. And then I think from, we can incorporate any comments you may have, entrust that it will just get better, like a little more dressed up and fancier looking as we move, but the content itself would not shift from that. So that's the approach and I'm happy to, like if you think it would be helpful, I'm happy to actually pull up some of the draft chapters on the screen.
For me, but. I've been going over them. I got no problem, just continue to read, for us to continue to read them.
Very good. So we will continue in that vein to get you the remainder of the chapters. You all can receive them, look at them in your, I think, you know, we have some time. You'll see in terms of what we're proposing for the final steps of the engagement. There's, we do have time where we want you all to feel comfortable with the content before we're presenting it to broader audiences, so we are basically endeavoring to schedule those final engagements at the end of April. So if you get comments, like hopefully the comments aren't such that like, we've been talking a lot throughout this process, so nothing at this point should be too much of a surprise, but if you see something concerning, let us know sooner than later, but if it's minor stuff, we can make those minor fixes up to the last minute, but if you say like, this chapter's way off or something wasn't, isn't what you were expecting, we're happy to incorporate that type of feedback sooner than later, so we can get in front of the content for these next engagements.
Has anybody been looking over and seen anything drastic that?
Looking over, yes. Drastic, no.
Okay. It's reassuring. All right, so that sounds like a great plan. We'll continue on that effort and I think by the, by next week, you should have the drafts in hand and we can continue that review process. So the approach to final engagement, we wanted to organize final discussions to both summarize the plan and again, try to turn toward discussing implementation and bring together stakeholders that may have a role in that. So what we're thinking right now is focusing on community-based organizations, some of which were involved previously in the process of engagement last summer. So revisiting those relationships and inviting them back to discuss where the plan has landed, talk about items that they could be involved in, but then also do a parallel session with municipal leaders, so department heads, board committee heads, anyone that would like to come join us. Both of those will likely occur during the day, so probably do like one in the morning, one in the afternoon, ideally on the same day, or our team could come out and do both of them efficiently in a morning and afternoon. And then potentially, depending on how those two sessions go and if there's a desire from either, ideally both sides of that conversation, to have maybe a more of like a networking, kind of how can we team together on getting some of these ideas moved along, we would be happy to host and kind of convene a third session if there's interest in it, but we'll kind of gauge and see if, how that interest looks. And then that could, that could occur following. The dates we're holding right now that are both for, the dates we're setting out in time, both for the purposes of making sure that the content settles and is good and you all feel comfortable with it, but also to give us the room to set the dates and begin promotion and outreach of those dates, so that people aren't surprised by them and have time to get them on the calendar. So we're holding both Monday, April 28th, and Wednesday, April 30th. And also, I don't have this on the slide, but I think it's reasonable, and Larry and I were talking about this a little bit before the meeting started, to have a community, more general call to the community, a community presentation about where the content of the plan has landed in the evening of one of those dates as well. So it'll probably be like actually a three-series meeting, so it'd be maybe morning CBOs, afternoon department or municipal leads, and evening, general public, whoever would like to come and hear about where the plan landed. And those three meetings would both be review of the content, invitation for those parties to all comment on the content. I think probably by the end of April, we'll, through the website, the town's website, the project website, I think launch the draft plan before then and officially launch a community comment period, which will probably be about 30 days. And this will probably land in about the, either towards the end or maybe the midpoint of that comment period. So I think launching the comment period more around like April 15-ish or earlier, beginning of April, would make sense, depending on how your comments are coming. We can decide when that launch should occur. And that would be more of a online launch with this punctuating it with in-person meetings. Questions or thoughts about that approach or ways that you think it could be improved or if this sounds good, we're happy to just implement it? Okay. So we'll continue heading in this direction and I think it's, admittedly, I feel like we, at the end of these long processes, haven't found the right way to share all of the, like you're seeing how many pages of information there is. And so we're, I think, usually it's both a look back at the process, a executive-level summary of the content, and an invitation to participate in the implementation is kind of the most successful recipe we've had. We've leaned in on the content and some and it's fallen pretty flat, just because there's so much. So I think it's, trying to stay at a high level in some of these final conversations, but build up the excitement a little bit for the implementation activities.
Yeah, I think you're going to want to go over that. I mean, hate to say it, but there's probably a lot of people that are not going to spend that much time looking at it that should comment at least, so to have an executive summary that says, this is where we, after all the process, this is where we want to go, at least if they look at that, hopefully they can comment on that as to where they thought that and how that may affect them, especially as you're talking about department heads and stuff as well.
This is, I mostly covered this so far, but I think the official launch of the draft plan for comment will be, again, not launched by one of those meetings, but launched more online through the website, potentially partnering with Milford TV to get some adds-up on in-between public access sort of programming, things like that. That would launch the, there's no, there's not a statutory requirement for the amount of time in a comp plan comment period, but I think 30 days is what we typically give, which gives people enough time to take, like be aware of it and then take the time if they would like to take the time. We will share, when we launch and announce the draft plan is available for comment, we'll launch with it a community survey with a link and a QR code, which people can connect to to give us comments, which is usually a pretty easy way for people to comment on any chapter. Usually people will comment on a chapter or two they're most interested in, not all chapters, but would they, anyone who wants to take a look can comment on as much or as little as they would like to. So next steps, again, everything we're continuing to compile on the plan website, maybe, I guess, this is a detail we should coordinate on. At some point, maybe after, say, two weeks or so from now, and I could get a date to Larry, but maybe we just have like a all-clear from you all, maybe through Larry to us, that at that point, we can start thinking about uploading draft content to the project website and start thinking about the launch of that draft material. But we'll kind of let you all continue to gain a comfort level with the draft chapters as they stand. And then the other next steps include outreach for those events, of course. The other question we wanted to have in discussion with the group and confirm is just the plan on the next ad-hoc committee meetings. So you all have meetings on, upcoming on April 1st and April 15th. April 1st, depending on your appetite for review, April 1st might be a little quick to have a productive discussion. April 15th might be, give us, give you all a little more room to, if you want to, like I'm finding.
I guess I'm sort of asking the question only because, you know, we've seen various sections before, we've gone through the content. Do you think having another meeting with us, other than us sending you information and comments, is there a need for that in April? I mean, I can understand, or you know, this is me, I was thinking that it would be important to have a meeting, to have that meeting in May, where it's gone out to the public, because I, I'm interested in what their comments are and wanting to make sure that their comments, you need to be careful addressing their comments in general, because we want to make sure as to how they, that flows into the general context of what was there or not, so it obviously can't be an open.
Correct.
So those, I think, are important for us to understand and get back. We wouldn't know those till May, and I'm just thinking that the board and the members of the committee, sending comments back to you through then, I'm not sure what else we would do in April, other than doing that same thing. So I, trying to expedite the process, I'm not, I'm not sure that we'd need the meeting in April. I'm certainly open to other board members' comments, but that would be my comment.
And to Joe's point, to the extent that the May 6th meeting would be the first time in May they could get together to comment on any of that, if you would have your general scoping sessions earlier than the 28th and 30th, you know, maybe the prior week, on a Wednesday and Thursday or something, I don't know, that would give you time to review the comments you might get and still have this next meeting on May 6th. Or even possibly do it earlier than that, especially if you're not having to come here at a joint meeting any other time at all with the boards in April. So maybe even move it up the week of Monday to 14th. So that'd be from the 14th to the 18th, well, try to avoid Fridays anyway, and 18th is Good Friday as well. I don't know, just a thought, because you get all that, to the extent you're going to get comments, then as Joe says, you need to make sense of them, so to speak. See if they're relevant comments, number one, and then figure out what to do with them after that and whether or not you incorporate it or just report them, at least that'd give you a week or two to do that by, say, a May 6th meeting. I don't know.
Would you, in past things, have you seen there would be that much change in the, in the?
No, there's not.
I don't see, I don't see it, but again, I don't do it like you don't.
No, there's not, not as much. I think that there, we occasionally find, the community at large will help us find just some errors occasionally, with many eyes on it. So we do, of course, incorporate those types of changes. I think we, it's not that frequently. We have seen occasionally like a real strong community voice around a particular issue that maybe wasn't as present or prioritized in the plan document, which then could get lifted up. But I think what's important to explain in this setting of discussion and also to the community when we are in the meetings of review later, is that this, the process has built this content through many discussions with many community members, so it takes, we aren't going to dramatically change content based upon a single voice at this point, because we've been building this content with innumerous amounts of participants. So it would take really a multitude of voices and kind of a concerted effort to change that content at this point, which is not unheard of, but is.
So if you had it under 28, the dates you get set, you wouldn't see a problem?
I think it's definitely, if we plan for it, possible for us to go from a meeting, a series of meetings either on the 28th or the 30th and be ready to discuss comments with you on the following Tuesday, May 6th. I think that's very plausible and possible. Which would then allow us to, if that's the plan, have an ad-hoc committee meeting on May 6th and then potentially even on the following Planning Board meeting, May 20th, you could set yourselves up for having actually a Planning Board adoption vote for the comp plan, if so desired.
Sorry, just to be clear, would we at that time have a recommendation from the ad-hoc committee? I'm sorry if I missed that part.
No, I think that would either, it could either occur on May 6th or it could, there's no, again, no like statutory requirement for these details. It could occur even in the same meeting where the ad-hoc committee comes together, votes to positively refer the plan to the Planning Board for official adoption, and then the Planning Board could adopt as such.
But we'd want the committee's recommendation, would we not? I mean, I would.
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, the dates he's got set, he feels he can fill them, so that's, where Larry said maybe earlier, if he can, if he can do what he's got figured out, then I got no problem with it continuing on.
Yeah, I was just trying to buy.
No, I, yeah, I know. I understand, Larry.
Yeah, I think that, I would still bias the final engagement dates more late, like I think as we pull them forward, it just becomes more of a concern with the ability to properly promote the dates and get outreach for them.
Yeah.
Since we're on the market.
Yeah, I mean, that backend stuff isn't going to matter, to be totally honest, in the sense that if there were a number of comments that needed to be addressed from the 28th and we had the meeting and you couldn't do it, then we can always push ours back, but we've, we've at least brought the process through to that point.
Right. So tentatively, you'd look at May 6th as a joint meeting and then depending upon what can get accomplished there, the 20th is either another joint meeting if necessary, or, well, it'd be probably preferable to have a joint meeting, even though it's the board proper that adopts the plan. So there'd be two meetings, two joint meetings in May, the 6th to wrap everything up and hopefully the whole, the ad-hoc committee could make their recommendation at that point. And then the joint meeting on the 20th would primarily be for the board to adopt it.
Yeah, I think that, to be honest, I think that comes down to what the comments are or not. If the, if the committee up through the 28th has looked at everything, Josh comes back and says that we're hardly any comments from outside, from residents, then that, then the committee could take a vote on that night, in which case they're done, they don't have to come back again. The Planning Board can make that decision at that meeting, whether they want to vote then or vote in two weeks, but that's, that's up to us at that point.
Yeah. All right, so the 6th and the 20th.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable approach and then there's not, if something unforeseen occurs, there's nothing holding us to those dates, I mean, we can give ourselves the space to, whatever may happen.
So this way, if I do retire on June 3rd, it's not going to come in soon enough.
That was on camera, right?
Saying it for 10 years. Looking right to the.
You're right behind. How many times do you?
In his control. 24 of the year, though. He didn't say the year, no.
All right. So the 28th, those are, just refresh my memory, so you're going to have department heads, people like that in the afternoon, in the afternoon, morning, or how are we doing that again?
Yeah.
Mentioned a night meeting, what was that?
So I think that it'll be three parts on these, one of these two dates.
Okay.
And our hope would be that we can, I mean, it's basically just, I guess, more coordinated in terms of venue, because probably at least the department head meeting probably wants to occur upstairs, maybe, just so there's space for it.
Well, if you have them all together, or you're more likely to get all the department heads to participate if you do a Zoom meeting.
Okay. Yeah, and we can.
They actually do have jobs.
Yes, indeed. We're very respectful and.
Yeah, those would be in the daytime, more likely in the morning, but whatever.
Okay.
Definitely not in the evenings. The evenings would be other agencies.
Oh, 28th, the meeting, nighttime. Select board, we're meeting that night, I'm pretty sure, so.
Right.
They could, yeah, they don't necessarily have to be morning and afternoon couplets. I mean, they, I think in terms of community-based organizations and department leads, it'll probably be about an hour meeting, I would guess, is what we're going to try to keep to, being conscious of everyone's time being very important and limited. So we could technically do both of those as morning meetings, depending on how, what's best available for me.
Okay.
And then would likely then do, the community meeting, though, would be an evening session. I think probably, we haven't confirmed a venue yet, but we'll be looking for potentially one of the churches again as a venue, as opposed to town hall.
Okay, so that's going to be outside town hall.
Yeah, it'll be outside of town hall likely, because we have seen a willingness of a more diverse population to attend.
Better attendance and.
Outside of town hall.
I got you.
Okay.
The library, depending on the size, the library is where we have a lot of our community engagement stuff, so.
Right. Yeah, and we've done some of our meetings there.
That's right, you did.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll talk about that and some of the, those are some of the details we need to get confirmed and why we need a little bit of this lead time to get that finalized, to get flyers out and stuff like that. So, but that would be the, the three-meeting couplet would be, say, two-hour-long sessions, which we'll probably coordinate, maybe coordinate in part with Larry and yourself to just make sure that we're not stepping on other meetings or get the best opportunity potentially to get some people in a room with us, whether that be a virtual room or in person. Do the same with outreach to CBOs to kind of feel out when might be the best time to do that on one of these two dates and then also have the time at the library, at St. Mary's, somewhere like that.
So you're going to go out to the other business organizations, Josh, to see what their availability and stuff is? You've probably had more interaction with them than we would know.
Yeah, well, we'll be contacting the partners that we've talked to, like the Chamber, et cetera, to see what they think and kind of, we haven't done that yet, but propose this same idea to them, but we'll do that coordination, so.
How does he do it before June, before they open up the Charles River? Lock everybody off? Lock everybody off?
I think that is, that's everything I had, and I appreciate everyone, you know, all of your focus on this and helping us get to the finish line here. And...
It's in sight.
We're close, yeah.
Yeah.
Any thoughts or questions?
No, I was happy when I seen the word draft written across.
So I'll call you in the next two or three days.
Yeah, we can, yeah, and we can do both some content coordination, but also some...
Sixty years ago, I didn't think the word draft was that good.
Exactly. Different kind.
Well, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Why don't we take, Mike, you're here, so we'll take...
Well, you want to note that Agenda Item 4, they granted a continuance.
What's that?
Oh, Agenda Item 4 is continued, they don't have the plans, they...
Okay.
Continuance until next meeting.
With the motion, we continue until our next meeting?
Okay, move the...
Second.
Move the second, we move the...
Continue.
The 110 South Main Street to the next, the next meeting. Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Fine.
Opposed, and then on the 5. Okay, Mike? Now you're up, if you want to.
Want me to read the board in?
Yes, please.
You at 74 Medway Street. Michael Miran, it's the applicant. The applicant requests site plan approval to establish an accessory dwelling unit on the subject property. Copy of the recently adopted ADU requirements of the zoning bylaw are attached in your packet. Specifically, the proposal is to convert the 788 square foot second floor storage area above the existing detached garage to an accessory dwelling unit. More plans for the proposed ADU are also attached to the materials. The existing garage complies with existing setback requirements, and the site plan indicates the addition of one off-street parking space for the ADU. All applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, therefore, I recommend approval of the site plan, subject to relevant agency comments. As I said, the second page is the current regulations, and we're still waiting to hear back from the Attorney General. We may never hear back, who knows? We did get a report from the Water Department, they recommend a dedicated water service. And they'll, they'll want to approve the diameter of the line, so you'll need to coordinate with them. And to the, to the extent that they can determine that, you may want to show it on the plan. I did finally, today, get a report from the Highway Department that his only comment was that any road opening or curb cut requires permits, and trans permits must be obtained, from the Highway Department. So I don't know if he's looked at the plan or not, because obviously, all that stuff's already there. Get away, Mike.
I'm not sure how much more I can add. So I'm, I'm the owner, and I built the garage about a year ago, a little more. And, you know, with the recent enactment of the ADU, I thought I would take advantage of the opportunity. My personal interest is I just want to keep it a studio. The house on the property now is a three-bedroom. So, you know, I don't, I just wanted to, you know, keep the number of occupants down to a minimum, and, you know, at the same time, improve the property, so.
Good, thank you. Any comments from the board? Yes?
I found the addresses confusing, and I was, I was going to look up the assessor's data, because I would need to remind myself, but if I remember correctly, it listed the garage as one address and the house as another.
So I live next door, 8 Venice Street, that might be the address you saw?
It might be. Is that also a three-bedroom house, or?
Yes.
Three-bedroom, one of them's three-bedroom, one bath, the other's three-bedroom, three-bath, or something. My memory could be wrong on this.
Yep, I think you're close enough, but they're both, both ranch-style homes.
Okay, so neither of what I just said refers to the garage?
Correct. So the garage is on 74 Medway Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the property record card, without making that clarification, the assessors have their mailing address, which is where they live, at the Venice Street address, on the property record card for 74 Medway, which adds to the confusion.
Yes.
So...
So I wasn't wrong to be confused.
You're right in there.
I sure was. Thank you, that clarifies a lot.
I even got on G and H's case for, for doing their plan the way they did, because it's misleading. It's not inaccurate, but it, it doesn't clarify it, so, anyway.
Yeah, being on a corner street just adds to the confusion.
You just totally cleared things up for me, thank you.
Okay.
And the only, the only other comment I would have is that you're probably going to need to submit architectural building plans to get a building permit. I don't know that these meet the requirements, but that you can deal with the building official on.
Yep.
Someone's back from the sewer department, Larry?
No. No.
They reviewed it?
It's me. You'd never know, because they didn't respond.
I would make a motion if nobody's gotten anything.
In two or three weeks, they'll, they'll send over an email, and somebody will have done something a week or two too late.
So there's a, there's a recommendation for a separate service for water, right? And we don't know about sewer.
Right.
Well, I would, I mean, I don't, I, you're going to need to make sure sewer is okay with, with what you showed here, as opposed to putting in a separate sewer line. You know, that's just telling you so that you're aware of it, because if you did it this way, and they say no, they have the right to say no. So I would check with them before you do anything, but there's, there's no reason why we couldn't approve it based on, you know, for our, for our purposes. The only, the only thing I would like to know is if they do do that, is that, and the water, is that, is that a plan gets submitted back to us that shows whatever the final condition is? So if they have a separate water line, as opposed to an upgraded water line, we know that, and if there's a separate sewer line, that's shown on the site plan that gets, that gets submitted as an ASBILT or whatever.
That should come back to us, or it only goes to...
Only, only for record, not...
To engineering, right, for record.
Yeah, just for record.
Yeah, I just won't sign the plan until that, whatever that is, gets placed on the plan, but if you make that a condition of your approval, then I just won't sign the plan until we find out what that is.
You can do it that way, too, yeah, I mean...
Yeah.
Well, if, if I may, I mean, I just assume get a, I'd be happy to reply with an ASBILT for record, but I, I'd like, so I could move forward with permit and get the board's approval tonight, if, if there's no objection.
Well, we would be, I mean, effectively, we'd be approving it subject to you submitting the plan that, that comes out of you talking to the water or the sewer department, so you wouldn't be coming back to, you wouldn't have to come back to us, you would just need to file that plan with Larry so that it could be approved. So it's not really a, it's not another meeting with us. If you did that tomorrow, and you went to the water department, and they said, you know, put in a separate line, and you went to the sewer department, said, no, you can do it, it's shown on the plan, you could submit that plan to Larry, and, and we're done, you don't, you, so it's not a meeting with us, it's just a matter of whether we're asking for an ASBILT or an actual site plan prior to building that shows what you're going to do.
Okay.
Yeah, that way you'll get a signed site plan, they've authorized me to sign site plans based on whatever their approval and conditions are, so it, you know, dramatically speeds up the process. It's just a matter of, right at this instant, none of us know exactly what the answer is, including apparently the sewer and the water department.
Right, which was my hesitation.
Well, I think the water department, you can make the decision, they're either going to ask you to, to increase the size to the, to the main house, so that you can do that, or I would assume it's going to be perfectly okay to just put a separate service into the, to the, to the current garage, to the ADU. That's up to you, you can do whatever you want to do. Sewer department, I think you just need to say, hey, you never made a comment, I want to go get my building permits and stuff, what are you going to ask me to do when I get out there? So that way you don't get surprised when you go out there, which is also to your advantage anyways, before you start digging, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Sewer, yeah, sewer, they're going to need to have a permit, they're going to issue a perm, they'll have to issue a...
Do they need a, do, do they need a permit? A sewer permit?
Well, if they decide, depending on what they decide.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
They're going to make them put in a separate service.
So according to this, am I looking at this correct, right? I got, I got a W and an S here.
Not necessarily. That's what I'm saying, is, if you're, if they go from building to building, do they need a sewer permit to do something?
So, that's why I want to note this, right? Right now, according to this site plan, it's showing water and sewer coming from the existing dwelling over to the garage.
Right.
There is a letter, though, saying from the water department that certain upgrades need to happen.
They said, well, they recommend...
Either, either an upgrade, and it's a recommendation, not a requirement. It's a recommendation to upgrade or to put in a separate service.
I mean, as far as the sewer...
This is why I tried to get, I wanted us to have...
Right, woman inspector gives you the okay to do it.
I wanted us to try and get a...
Yes, that's kind of what I was just, ASBILT generally implies after construction.
Yes.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure that that didn't interfere with me actually doing construction, you know, because I could work on the insulation and the drywall.
Determining what the sewer department and the water department are going to require.
Understood, yes.
And it's easier for you to go bug them, because they apparently don't care or lease it and stuff. And so they don't respond either clearly enough, or in a timely fashion, or at all. So you can get those guys to tell you what they want, or agree with you, how it's going to go, show that, whatever it is, on the plan, even if it's a no, that on the water line, it says what the sewer department says.
So what if he can't get something from the sewer department?
Thank you. That's funny, why this is going on, I could be doing...
All he needs is their comment. If they, if they decide they don't need to do anything...
What if he can't get a comment from the sewer department?
The sewer department or the plumbing inspector?
Or the plumbing inspector. See, that, that's perfect. If he gets a comment from the plumbing inspector saying that building to building is fine...
If the sewer, if the sewer department isn't going to give him a comment, then, based on what he's shown, as long as the plumbing inspector will approve that connection, then we're set.
That's, I just...
I just need to know from somebody on their behalf that, that we can go ahead, because I'm assuming you're taking my recommendation and approving it, it's subject to something to do with sewer and water, which apparently neither department themselves know what that is.
Sometimes, in particular, the sewer department can be difficult to get an answer from, especially in a case where if they are fine with this going from building to building, they don't need a sewer permit.
They don't need anything.
So, so to get something from them saying that they don't need anything is not necessarily an easy task. So I just wanted to make sure, well, if it's irrelevant, then...
I gather from the plumber.
Well, I guess the question is, is there already water and sewer service from the house over to that structure? Going as standard?
There is pipes, so there's no actual water or sewer flowing through those pipes.
So they're roughed in?
Yeah.
In the location shown?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, that would be more the plumbing inspector now.
Then you want to get into.
I get it, I'm just saying, based on the prints that we have in front of us, that's all. If something were to change based on water and sewer feedback, then we address it then. But right now, the site plans that are in front of us, based on the information we have...
Right. It's there.
Following the conforming of the structure, correct?
Was it rough inspected by the sewer, plumbing inspector?
Yes.
Then it's there, okay.
Right, so that's why, so we're, we're talking about changing out, but they're already, in a sense, roughed in. So unless those two agencies, water and sewer, make their own changes, and come back to us, right?
Water said it was a reg, they recommended, so that's...
Right, I guess my only question is, did sewer take this up and just didn't, simply didn't, so have they looked at it?
Sewer doesn't want to know what they want to do with these. As far as they're concerned, would, they, they're still under the belief that they have no control over it.
Well, and I don't know that the commission met and, and reviewed this. I don't know if it was an agenda item. They may not have had as a board, I don't know, look at it. John, Uncle John may have looked at it.
If it's roughed in and inspected, just approve the, approve the plans there.
So my next question, though, based on, if you guys look at this overhead, there is a, other structure back here. I did drive by today, and you can actually see it in this picture, so it's a shed or anything in it.
The yard shed?
The yard shed, there's two, because I drove by the site, they're not shown on the site plan. So just want to note that.
One is actually shown, I don't know why he missed the other one.
So, and that's...
Did they do the ASBILT of the garage when it was just the foundation?
Um, well...
And was the second shed there at that time?
The second shed there was there at that time. I believe they, they did the ASBILT after.
And then I...
And they went back out to add the topography that Larry wanted as part of the submission to the board, so, yeah.
I'm just going to say, like, that shed...
I mean, effectively, this is a site plan for us, so it should be correct.
Again, and I went by today, and there were, and it shows on this, this overhead, there are two sheds, one is kind of faintly shown on, on the G and H drawing, but the other one is clearly not shown, and it's precariously close to the, to the property line, too. I think that just needs to be noted. It's a little, you know, if it was an existing shed, it's out of our purview, but if it was new, because again, it looks a heck of a lot like the garage, it's there. So I just wanted to be, making everybody aware of what I saw, and, and get your feedback.
The, the one that's not shown is, is well outside the setbacks. The one that, the, the blue one is shown close to the lot line, and that shed's been there for, long before I purchased the home, back in 2017.
Yeah, I think for their purposes, it, the other shed just needs to be shown, as far as whether or not that's an issue, that's, that's a zoning...
Can, can we make that a condition of the ASBILT?
It should be added pri, so...
An ASBILT isn't going to happen until everything's completed, and then you submit it. You need something that gets an approval.
Yeah, so I think, I think based on what everybody's talking about, I think the shed needs to be added, but the, no, you cannot do that. The shed needs to be added to the plan, and then Larry can, then Larry can sign the plan as being approved, and then with regard to, this is my, this is my proposal, with regard to whether or not the water and sewer changes, that's something that I can follow up with the water and sewer departments to, to, well, I, I think it's fair to say it should be on file. You know what, actually, I think we need to know, because we need, we need to be able to guide people, Larry and I need to be able to guide people properly when they come into the office.
I agree with that.
So we need to get clarification from water and sewer as to what they are going to be requiring.
We have, we have an approved and inspected water and sewer line there already.
Yeah, but that was, that was approved, that was approved based on not an auxiliary dwelling unit.
No occupancy.
Yes.
Now it is, so there, there is, there's a different usage that it could have been approved under.
There was also a stop work order on the premises for the use of the upstairs.
I have no problem approving the plan and having Liz do that. I, I'm not, I mean, where they put the water, where, at the end of the day, isn't going to change our approval or not, but I think it's worthwhile for us, because it's in front of us, and again, it's not going to stop Mike from doing anything or not, it's an opportunity for us to go back to the water department and to the sewer department and say, how are you going to handle these going forward, so that it'll move the process along for everybody downstream. But I mean, I have no problem approving this one based on the current, current plan, provided that the, the site plan includes both sheds on, on the site plan. And I can make that as a motion.
All right.
But I do think it's important that we have a site plan that does show everything that's on the site.
All structures, yes.
Yes, all structures.
Could I kind of clarify your motion? So is it to, to approve, subject to the plan showing the sewer and water as, no?
No, they, they can stay the way they are.
Oh, okay, but showing the sheds?
Yes.
And authorizing Larry to sign the plan once it shows the sheds?
Yes.
On our behalf?
Yes.
If the, if the motion passes?
Yes.
Okay.
So the water and sewer thing is just something I'm going to deal with on the side?
Okay.
To try and make this a little bit more effortless for us.
I mean, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't think we're going to, we would change, it's, it's more of a... more of, it's more of an assurance to the applicant that, in fact, you can do this. We're telling them that we're approving it, but you still haven't gotten approval from Water and Sewer, and they can tell you no downstream, and you don't want to be halfway through it, and then get a no. So I'm just trying to make sure everybody knows what's going on.
They might be able to separately say no.
Well, or say yes in a way that's gonna cost them way more money than they ever expected, which, again, is unfair, to find out at the end, when they should know damn good and well right now what the answer is.
Right.
If they showed the water connection at a different location, or a separate water connection, we're not gonna not approve it anyways. There's no use for the applicant to come back.
I will second Joe's motion.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An unanimous of five. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we have
See what they say.
Special permit referral for 26 Parker Street.
For me, I thought this was pretty straightforward. My own house has a variance like this, extending the existing setback, extending the structure, I can't figure out how to word this, consistent with the existing non-conforming setback.
Right.
I finally got it. And
It's even a little gray as to whether or not this needs a variance. I think it does need a special permit, no matter what, but, and it's just the way that, the way it's written.
Well, you want me to
This is certainly
Want me to read the report?
Is this the applicant?
Yes.
Hi.
Yeah, so, so the applicant requests a special permit for 26 Parker Street to allow for improvements to the existing single-family dwelling on the subject property. The lot's non-conforming as to area width and frontage. The house was built in the 1850s, and is non-conforming as to side yard setbacks. Specifically, the proposal includes raising the ceiling height to the second, on the second floor, as well as adding an eight-by-ten addition to the southeast side of the house, and a four-by-ten addition to the southwest side of the house. A small four-foot front porch is also being proposed. The house is to remain a single-family dwelling. We recommend favorable to the ZBA. So, yeah, the problem is more than just extending existing building lines, because it depends on which way you look at it, as to whether it creates a further encroachment or not. Because the house isn't exactly parallel with either side property line, it begins to create additional encroachments. That, as well as increasing the square footage of the residential use area within the building, is in the realm of the special permit approval as well. So the simplest way to getting through the process was just to have him go to the ZBA for the special permit, and that'll, whatever it is they say, will cover everything he needs.
Agreed.
That solves problems, solves problems for the building official as well. So I recommend approval.
Yes.
Again, I thought, to me, this one was straightforward, unless the, I mean, the applicant, unless he has a presentation he'd like to make for board members
Typically, they don't
Have further comments, I would make a motion to recommend favorable, recommend favorable action on this application to the ZBA.
They're moved?
I'm gonna second this with discussion.
Yes.
Just, Liz, on the driveway with the saw cuts, it's obviously gonna be a three-bedroom home, so I presume at least like two-car driveway is going to be needed. It's a, it's a really tight area. You know, it's certainly
A curse, yeah.
An older house. I think the proposed changes are gonna look great for the neighborhood, considering the current house is a little run down.
Right, but he's good, you're
But I'm just
You're gonna have, you're gonna be, have the driveway extended, yeah, that's what it says.
It's gonna be extended.
So you'll be able to have two cars side by side?
Yeah.
Right now
Yes.
Yeah. Right now, right now, you could probably put two cars
Stack them.
Stacked.
Yep, 100%. Yep, just I saw the saw cut areas, and I just want to know in that front area.
Yeah, he's gonna, that, that, that hatching area is where he's extending the pavement to make the second parking space.
Again, the good thing about it is, we're not trying to increase the setback thing, we're just
Afraid to use.
Just drawing it out with a straight line, so.
Yeah, that's why it's a bit of a gray area when you read the, but it's definitely, doing the special permit is the way to do it, but
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a question. How are you gonna end up filling the oil fill?
Oil fill?
Yeah, it's right, right
Right in the front office.
You carry it, and you pull it, that's
Well, it's gonna have to be re
A lot of houses, they do that, believe me.
Depends on the elevation.
Oh, you should see how
Depends on the elevation.
That's all flat. Parker Street?
No, I'm talking about coming out of the house, putting on the steps, as to how high it sits in the house now, where it is in the house coming out.
We did it, we did it to our house. Are you seeing, I mean, we had a
If that's coming out of the, if it's coming out of, out of the rim joist, it's gonna be into, depending on how the, how you, how the front is framed, it's gonna be coming through almost at the elevation of the porch.
Right, that's
Yeah, but Joe, looking at the front elevation?
Yeah.
You'd be able to put it just to the side of the, of the front door, sticking
It may not, because I don't, you can't run it up and down.
We drove.
Chances are, it's up in that elevation. If it came out of the rim joist to begin with, it's gonna be in that, so
Right.
Unless you run it from the inside and bring it out, you're coming out, you're coming out, and then, unless they're gonna, unless they're gonna box all around it.
It would have to be relocated from the
Well, we had a, we had a core, we had a core, we corded it to the foundation
Corey in the foundation.
In broad
I'm not talking about turning this down or anything. I'm just saying, you need to be aware of how that comes out, because the framing for the front porch may not be all that easy.
If they frame it, and they can't put oil in, they'll get an open pit.
It's always, it's always gas.
Okay, any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass for further referral. Anybody got anything else to bring up? Larry, you saw the referral?
Yeah, that's why we have a referral for Kevin's zoning amendment. Zoning change amendment.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
Okay.
You're all set.
We're gonna have a public hearing on, we'll set a public hearing on that, once we get a
Yep. The public hearings for the floodplain amendment, and for this latest thing, will be April 15th, right after your reorganization.
Okay.
Larry, if Walter Circle, they were asking me about street acceptance, do, if I have it, we have it remanded from the Select Board on Monday?
I don't know.
All right.
I'll have to look.
What time?
They've had the schedule for a year, or more, so we can look at that tomorrow.
Okay. I wasn't sure, knew for certain, but
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
What's the pleasure of the board?
First to the chair?
Second.
Moved the second of the jury. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An unanimous of five. Good night.
Make the motion.
Yep. Martha.
Martha.